In-house person for this project and we thank him for sticking with this and Maze Wares for the work that you guys have done with us. Four point seven dollars, four point eight million dollars is not an insignificant sum of money. And for what we anticipate getting out of it as a county, it's going to be well worth going through the process and taking the time and not trying to do everything on a county's dime because county doesn't have dimes, we've got pennies. So this has been a real good experience for us and we just want to thank you guys for everything that you've done to make sure this project continues to go and does what it needs to do so that the county can reap the benefits of it in the future.
Absolutely, we're so thankful to have been part of it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I did see Mr. Scott Memes from Edgefield County sneak in late, but since he was late, and I'm from Edgefield County, I'm going with Ms. White next and putting you at the bottom of the list, Mr. Memes. Harden, you're next, right?
Good evening, Ms. Chairman and Council. Thank you for giving me some time to speak today. I also want to welcome Mr. Upchurch to McCormick County and we look forward to the great things under your leadership to come. We were not able to attend last month's meeting, but I noticed when I watched YouTube footage that there was a lot of concern about pressure and water quality at Savannah Lakes Village. I've stood at this podium no less than four times to explain the most reasonable and economic way to alleviate this issue, and I'm here to do it again. Let's throw it at the wall and see if it sticks this time. There are inline pressure reducers in the larger lines at Savannah Lakes Village. The reducers were put in soon after the water system was installed at SLV to reduce the pressure because there were only a few homes occupied at that time. The pressure reducers were only meant to maintain, to remain until population grew. Those reducers need to be reduced, removed to allow the full flow of water through the water system at SLV. I heard discussion of a water tower, however, a water tower won't address the pressure issue because the reducers are only going to allow so much water through those lines. Also, it could build up so much pressure, it could cause a catastrophic breakdown of the system. Removing the reducers won't cost a dime and seems that it would be worth a try. Next was the water quality. Abbeyville acknowledges that the lines in Calhoun Falls have been neglected and not properly maintained. Until that problem is fixed, and it will be, an inline filtration system could be installed behind the master meter. The optimal idea would be for Abbeyville to put the filtration system in on the Calhoun Falls side of the master meter. I also heard the chairman speaking about getting funding for a water line that would bypass the Calhoun Falls line, which would cost in the millions. The Calhoun Falls lines are there, they are intact, and just need to be cleaned up. Now that we are paying Abbeyville directly for water, that would lead me to believe that they acknowledge that we should be receiving clean water and it's Abbeyville's responsibility to provide it, and I have every confidence that they will do so. If McCormick County is serious about adding water lines, it would be much more prudent to tie into Greenwood County's water system that would actually be a shorter distance of pipe and would give us another water vendor to keep us from further being enslaved to the McCormick CPW. One more quick issue is the budget. In the debate that transpired last month, there was one important question that was not addressed or asked. What caused the massive depletion of funds? Let's see if we can connect the dots. Even after one million dollars of one cent sales tax money and after one point five million dollar GO bond, eight hundred thousand dollars was used of our cash reserves for the Men's Center. And that's, that's a lot of money for us, and I can't understand why y'all didn't tell us about that, address it and let us know what happened. But that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. White. Clemson Station.
Good afternoon. I'm Wilder Ferrero with Clemson Station. I've been in this position over 25 years, only have four more years to retire.
Count them down.
So, over the McCormick County, Abbeyville County and Anderson County, I've been in this project for 10 years now. When I came to Abbeyview in a big meeting with my boss, Dr. Dobbins, the first person who I met at the door said, "Wilder, it ain't going to happen here." So if you look at my report, we got five million dollars investments, a $50 million impact for the next 20 years. I taught more than 3,000 people in 10 years. So the impact is just tremendous. We opened three farmers markets, McCormick, Donalds and Calhoun Falls. So we had about three million more in sales for these vendors coming to our area. We call this regional freshwater coast regional project because it involves the freshwater coast of South Carolina. So I've been to Washington DC to present our paper, and they said, "What you've done is almost impossible for economic developers," because we focus on the big guys, I focus on the small guys, so bring them up, grassroots movement. So I'm here to show you the need for a farmer's market pavilion. We've been kind of using different places. We started in Door Mill Complex, and after four years, we had to move to another location, which is now right beside the complex, the Tomage Wellness Complex. She, Becky Powell Moon was kind enough to let us use that space. And McCormick has been our lead market for the freshwater coast. We're all behind Greenwood. So with getting our market strengthened, we're going to be able to provide more vendors to the whole freshwater coast region. The Senior Center is a 501(c)(3), and they said, the board decided that we can actually occupy part of their land to build our pavilion. We're the only farmer's market that does not have a pavilion. I'll build one in Donalds, $50,000. I built another one in Calhoun Falls, it cost us $70,000, all through fundraising, county, city, companies, the mask municipal association, so we were able to come up with $70,000. For just the pavilion at the lot adjacent to the complex, we just got a quote for $100,000. Just the pavilion, this is it, 80 by 40, no electricity, no nothing. But the board of the complex, of the Senior Center, said we can utilize the lot between the Senior Center and the Tomage Complex. So we knocked down the trees, and that can be done a nice, smooth pavilion with parking space. So that's going to cost us probably $180,000. I'm not asking for money at this moment. The city's already committed to support, so they already have a budget and they're going to send us a check. But now I need to be on board with us because you're going to leave to this community for the many years to come, 50 years to come, we built a nice pavilion for so many other people to come enjoy the lake and fresh food. Lee Logan, which is part of the Freshwater Coast Community Foundation, I'm here today because they created a 501(c)(3) called Freshwater Coast Community Foundation. I'll introduce James to our CEO, Lena Miller. I'll drive with her to meet you, okay? I wanted to meet with her. So because of them, they came up with a project for Clemson to get involved. That's why I'm here, because they came after us. So I, Wilder, was sent to this region. And Lee Logan went to a national conference in DC one day. He said, "Do you know what the two things that people move to other areas, mainly rural areas? First one is what? School, right? Everybody looks for good school for their kids and grandkids. Number two, a farmer's market." So that's what people are looking for when they move to other areas. So airport is fantastic, no doubt, that's going to change the whole ballgame, but a nice, solid, beautiful pavilion for more vendors to come to McCormick will change also for more investors to come when they see a nice pavilion as well. So it's a, it's a combination of great things that this county probably will be enjoying for the next 20 years. So I'm just rolling the ball, ask for your support, and I'll come later with another presentation, PowerPoint presentation with the cost, everything else. If I'm back here means you guys support us. If I'm not, up here on my own, but I'll make it happen. I promise you, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wilder? I just, a comment, very excited to this presentation that you made for us because it just emphasizes, as I've mentioned at several of our meetings, we had a turning point in this county of moving forward economically and with these projects that particularly one that you just mentioned is excellent, and it adds to what we're already doing. So it's very exciting to hear it, we appreciate it, and we, I would love, we would all love to see a farmer's market here, a nice pavilion.
I'll be in touch.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, now we get Mr. Edgefield, Mr. Scott, how you doing, Mr. Scott? Yeah, good, good to see you.
First of all, I apologize, I got hung up, I'm trying to get out for the week. So Dr. Cowan apologizes he couldn't be here tonight. He has got some, a couple of things, he's been out of town trying to take care of himself. So it's been a while, I know it's been about a year y'all came out, but I wanted to come give y'all a little bit of update. We've got some future projects that I want the county to be aware of of what we've done. I know we had a conference call the other day. But just to give you a little bit of rundown, I'm Scott Memes, I started here in 2019 along with Dr. Cowan, we all came within two months of each other. When we got there, in 2020, when we first opened up school, we came in with 32 students as of right now, and all, the first week of August, we're moving our new class in, we are coming in with 89 students, and they're coming from all over the Southeast. It's not South Carolina mainly, but we do have some that will be coming from, we've had them from Georgia, Florida, North Carolina, but majority of our students are coming, of course, from South Carolina, and they're staying in South State, State schools when they leave. Citing point for McCormick County, right now, as of right now, we have 51 full-time employees, 45 part-time, and we're looking to hire 10 more. So we're steady growing. The legislators and people at the State House have been wonderful to us. They just awarded us $17 million for this upcoming budget with future projects, and we're extremely excited. If you hadn't been out there, please get in touch with me, I'd love to give you a tour, especially what we've got going on now. Future projects is, I have one more cottage left, and that'll be about 14 more kids we can house. That would get us up to a total around 125 students total is what we can do now without going to the next phase, which is building the dorm, and that's, that's probably three to four years down the road, but that's where we're, where we're trying to get to. As most of you know, Delisle Hall, which is our biggest building on campus, I'm in the middle of redoing. It's an $8.7 million project. I am within two months of finishing it up. The great thing from McCormick County is when I redid this thing, I included a 270-person auditorium that we encourage people from McCormick County to use and outside of county. I mean, that's what we built it for. So if you have any question on that, please, there again, contact me on that, but we're really excited about that. There is a second phase to that project, which is site work, so I don't want people to pull up and say, "Man, they built 270-person auditorium, but they ain't got nowhere to park." It's coming, we're just waiting for the money to get in, and we're biting it off a little bit at a time. But the biggest thing that I wanted to come present to, to the county is, we did get funded $5 million for a meat processing facility. If you know anything about this, this is a very dying industry. We have been in, working with the Department of Ag, and it is, they're partnering up with us a little bit on the side, not, not out there, but they are helping us with it. Meat processing has been kind of a dying deal, it's all out Midwest, and now we're trying to bring it back local. Our ultimate goal at the school is to be 50% sustainable, and with this meat processing facility, it would allow us to use our own cattle and get to that. We're about 22 now, so this will take us to over, well over 50%, where we can put it back in our own cafeteria, so farm-to-fort kind of thing was what we're working on. The biggest things about this, this meats lab, it allows farmers from Edgefield County, McCormick County, you know, bring them in. I mean, they're taking them out of state, so we're losing state dollars on this. Second thing is, it's allowing us to have kids to have hands-on education of what's going on. At the end of the day, that's our key point, is bringing the kids up to the market. It's just not a whole lot of it out there. But I was on a conference call with Mr. Warner, he knows about it, we've had this thing going. It's been working the last couple of years, it just happened to come funding now. Infrastructure is one of the biggest concerns I have, we were on a conference call the other day, I think we got a lot of that worked out. So hopefully we fixing to get started in the design stage, but I wanted the county to be aware of what was going on. Once we get things worked out with infrastructure and designing, we will hold a town hall meeting at school for any concerns with the county. I mean, we want to hear them, you know, and, and work together is this, and I think we can make this all work together. Other than that, I just wanted to come by and touch base, let you know what was going on, on the long side out there, so, long ways away from Edgefield County. But like I said, if y'all have any questions, please feel free to call me, call Dr. Cowan, we'll help you any way we can.
Council, any comments?
It's good.
I would, I would just say that having, having been a part of the discussions on the changes that were made to the John Delahoe School, now to the Governor's School of Agriculture, I think this is remarkable, that so much has been done in such a short period of time to turn this around, to recruit students, to get a curriculum that is relevant not only to the state, but also on a, on a national basis. And I just want to congratulate everybody who's been a part of this and, and hope that can be sustained. When the, when the original discussions were made and the decision made to go to the Governor's School of Agriculture, SLV, I think, and the Public Affairs Committee, along with the Windfall Group, I can say with pride, were instrumental in the renovation and furnishing of the first dormitory that was opened on the John Delahoe Campus. And we were proud that we could make a contribution and are even prouder that it's been carried to the point that it has. Thank you very much.
And we, and we do appreciate it. I know I worked with a lot of you out there, and you're right, it has taken a village to make this happen. On the school side of things, just so you know, they recorded 98 percentile on their report card, which is the highest in the state back-to-back years. So they have, the school has really worked hard, we're calling it accredited, so which is a national deal, and it is a big thing out there, and it has done well. Like I said, that's Mr. Thompson's area, I try not to step on his toes too much, he loves his, he loves his school out there, but it has been, been a great deal, and Dr. Cowan has really brought all the troops together to make it happen. We got a couple, one of his helped us a long ways coming around, so.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, Mr. Memes, you know that thing, go just go ahead, ask it from McCormick County, but this governor's school, that it, student having the opportunity to be exposed to what their earth can do. And like you say, you started out with about 32 students, you're going to double, now you're almost at that 90.
Yes, sir, and our intention and plan is to be at 125 by the end of this year. We have added, we just hired a third recruiter, I refrate, we're hiring our third recruiter now, I mean, and they live on the road, and then I'm telling you, you know how it is when you say McCormick County, they kind of throw up, but then once they get here and realize what McCormick County's offering, it's, it's come a long ways, as you said earlier, and with the gentleman earlier, it's, McCormick County's coming, and I see a lot of good things that can happen here with all of us partnering up together.
That's right, and it, the camp is so beautiful up there now. Y'all have done a great job up there. The pines of it, and you drive up now, you don't, I've been here all my life, and I'm talking about 80 years, you just don't believe this happening in McCormick County.
That's right, but there again, it cannot help, you know, the governor, the first person, I think, I mean, he stepped in behind it, but also legislators, they have, the House has been great to us, and as I said earlier, we're talking about dimes, I mean, we couldn't have done anything without their money. And they have had full support, I mean, we've had zero people that's been against us up there in Columbia, so it's been great. But like I said, my line is always open, Dr. Cowan's is always open, please come see us, love having y'all out there.
Great to hear you got that meat processing coming.
It's coming, and I think honestly, that's going to be a huge thing for McCormick County. I mean, we're looking to do 50 heads of cattle or pigs a week, that's, that's a lot of meat. I mean, at any point given, times over, a million dollars worth of meat sitting in the freezer.
And on a personal note, that's going to be a boon for our family, because we, when we process our cows, we have to go out of county to do it too, so I think that's going to be a wonderful thing for in-county people who've been going somewhere else to get it.
You think about this area, how many counties it is between Edgefield County, all the way up to Anderson, Greenwood, McCormick, I mean, it's, and they don't have anywhere to go.
Potential, it's unlimited.
And if you call, you're, you're out, you know, and that's another thing. And so I'm not going to sit here and tell you we're going to be the fix-all, okay? It's not going to be a weekly deal, but I just think that, end of the day, the kids are going to learn their trade, and it's so much for them to get out, there's money out there from the Department of Ag to get started, but there's nobody that knows how to do it. So that's what we're trying to teach, and at the end of the day, that's what we're looking for. It's not a money deal for us, it's not, it's, it's a teaching, it's a teaching thing that we, and it also helps the community, and that's what we're all about. Kids first, community after.
Mr. Memes, I just comment too, also along with Mr. Jennings, just the appeal of the place, because when I first got on council, the discussion back then was, DJJ was looking at putting the fence around it and bringing in a lot of very troubled kids out there. Now, when you go to see the dormitories been restored and renewed, and we hold some of our workshops out at the Training Center, and it's, you just step back into the past, the rich history we have in this county, go in there and what the future holds, and particularly coming from Clemson and agriculture, seeing young people, high school kids, getting involved in agriculture, it's just, you can't put a price on that, you can't even hardly describe what's really taking place out there. Thank you everyone that's involved in, in making this happen, and we had, Mr. Murr had his first town hall, and we, y'all didn't make it, but we had a very good turnout, we appreciate the opportunity to, to use it for public events like that.
And we continued it, I mean, that's what we want, we want a partnership between us and y'all to use the place at any point in time.
I'd like to, I've seen Mr. Memes and his team work, and he is truly blessed, he's got some of the best people working under him, their hearts are in it, and it makes a good turnout for him either way.
Absolutely, I, I can't brag on my staff near enough of what they do, and the one that has to put up with me every day, that's, that's the first thing, but you know, the biggest thing that I wanted to is, when you pull up to the gate, when you drive by, I want you to know, if you know, I redid all that front, I want you to know where you're at. When you come by, I want to know, like before, you didn't really know what was back in there.
That's right, it's true.
But anyway, guys, thank y'all for everything you do. Again, with the meats lab, we'll get together and continue this conversation. Mr. Warner, thank you as always.
Thank you, Mr. Memes. Okay, at this time, we public comment, as far as you have a list.
Well, we have one Randy Foss. The other two decided they didn't want to speak.
I'm Randy Foss again.
Hey, Mr. Foss.
From Savannah Lakes Village, in Greenview Court. I was sent here because there was a promise made to do a town hall at Savannah Lakes, and that was going to be the next one. When is that?
It will be Tuesday, July 29th, at 6:00 PM at the Recreation Center.
Very good.
And we will have an announcement, a public announcement about, on, out on that as soon as we can.
We will go make the announcement tonight.
That's good. Thank you, there's a lot of very interested people that want to talk about the water, by the way.
I'm sure, it'll be very interesting.
And how many reducers do we have? Okay, another piece of information. The other thing is, we've all watched what's going on in Calhoun Falls, and it's still spiraling down. So I had a question for Mr. Cook. I'm assuming the water line goes through Calhoun Falls that goes down into Savannah Lakes? You know, the water line breaks in the town, and there's nobody there to fix it, what happens?
Good question. Your guess is as good as mine. I mean.
Not the answer I want.
Well, the, I don't, frankly, I'm not sure who owns that line, whether it's the town of Calhoun Falls, or whether it's Abbeyville County. And so my guess is that if the town, the town of Calhoun Falls can't fix it, then Abbeyville County would have to assume that responsibility.
I don't know.
I mean, I.
Sounds like a good question for Abbeyville.
I mean, it has, it has, it has to be one or the other, because the state's not going to come in, McCormick County's not going to go up there and fix it. So I, presumably McCormick County's not going to go out and fix, fix a water leak in Calhoun Falls, so, but I don't, I don't have any other alternatives.
We should find out. And lastly, I was over at the volunteer fire department meeting yesterday, and I asked the chief if he's happy with his fire hydrants, and he was shocked, of course, and said, "No." Well, I informed the chief after the meeting that they're all being tested next month, and he didn't know about it. We really need to communicate a little better about Savannah Lakes.
Well, I think the, I would, I would agree with you, but I do believe that the chief knew that there was going to be testing. I think the effective date of the contract, there were some, there were some issues that had to be resolved that had not yet been resolved, so we couldn't say exactly when. But I've been, I've been to tax commission meetings and have personally discussed the fact that there would be a con, a three, a contract to do the three-year review, but all, that all of the details had not yet been worked out.
I got the details from Stacy.
But the, but, but the chief, but the chief definitely knew there was going to be a contract for that, and it was going to happen.
I talked to him yesterday after the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
No one else.
All right, at this time, we will move into our decision items. Ordnance 2409, an ordinance amending the McCormick County zoning ordinance, ordinance 2108, and McCormick County zoning map to change the zoning district designation for the property identified by McCormick County Tax Map, 1130502009, from Forest Agriculture to Mick Shoes. Council to consider second reading, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Set. First and second, any discussion?
The, this, this, there was a public hearing before the Planning Commission, I think it was positive, the Planning Commission has, has recommended this, and so without significant dissent, so I think it's, it's worth supporting, very little adverse impact on the, the surrounding community to, to rezone the land, and so I think it's worthwhile proceeding.
Okay, if any further discussion? And I will comment that before the third reading, we will have a public hearing on this ordinance, so if there is any concerns to come up within the next month, you'll have that opportunity to come before us at the public hearing. Could I get a motion, a vote on this ordinance? All in favor? It carries. Okay, ordinance 2505, an ordinance amending the McCormick County zoning ordinance, 2108. McCormick County zoning map to change the zoning district designation for property identified by McCormick County Tax Map. One thirty-nine zero 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 two four for Forest Ag to commercial. Council considered this first reading, title only.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Don't need discussion on the title only.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, a point of, a point of order that I would, would ask. Are the, the county attorney, what would happen if council voted not to approve this at the first reading?
Well, at first reading, under our code of ordinance, there is no vote. I mean, normally council does vote on it, but if there's really no...
We don't need a vote for this.
He goes to second reading. At that point, you would vote on it up or down before a public hearing. You could vote on it on second reading. I debated that, on this, frankly, and I think you know why, because the planning commission...
Said no.
...initially recommended.
Right, we not do it.
This request. But I put it in form of the ordinance, because county council has the last say ultimately. So I would recommend just taking it on the second reading, just to be covered on that, bring it up again next month or in a special column.
Okay, thank you.
And also would comment along those same lines too, in discussing this, since it was a recommendation from our board. But I feel like, since it does affect public people and public requests, that it needs to go to second and be voted on and discussed and voted up or down per their recommendation, just to make it fair versus tabling it or shutting it down tonight.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking at the wrong ordinance. I didn't need the second, this one.
Okay, well, we needed a second.
No, we're not gonna do it anyway. That's good.
But we need, we need to vote on it, so it's gonna move forward. I need a, all in favor of this being title only, right hand, please?
Title only.
Title only. All right, good deal. It carries. And number three, ordinance twenty-five oh-six, and ordinance amending ordinance thirteen oh-seven to increase the solid waste fee to be applied to the cost of management and disposal of solid waste generated within the county. And McCormick County Council consider first reading only, title only?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just so the, so the public knows, we're asking to increase this from eighty dollars per year to one hundred dollars per year, for the simple reason that the, our vendors who are processing our solid waste have significantly increased their costs and prices. And we have run a deficit on this particular item for the last several years and are simply trying to, to break even at this point. So I think this is, this is, this is worthy consideration.
Yes, sir. I might mention this. The, I think we should change the, the way that's worded at the very end after McCormick County, so the public has notice of the increase, what it actually is. At the end of that, where it says County of McCormick, but from eighty dollars to one hundred dollars. So that someone that's looking at the agenda without having to look at the ordinance and study the ordinance, it would be right there on the agenda. And this has not been increased since the previous ordinance was adopted in two thousand fourteen. So you're talking eleven years.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is that a recommendation from the general counsel that we do an amendment at this time?
Yes, amend, amend, just, just the wording of, of the agenda item, just to add that, so that the public knows.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion then, that the wording of that last line in the, in the ordinance be changed to, whereas the McCormick County Council finds that the annual user fee for solid waste should be increased from eighty dollars to one hundred dollars.
Got a motion? Do I get a second for amendment? Got a second? Any further discussion?
And also to add it on the agenda, as...
I'm just talking about on the agenda, because the ordinance itself that I drafted, and I seen it earlier today, and I apologize for that. I was having some issues out of state, but that does state specifically that it's increased from eighty to a hundred in several places in the ordinance. I just thought that it's, that in the agenda item, you know, if you added it in that, if some, if, or the public just happened to look at it and saw the agenda as it is now, we wouldn't, wouldn't know it was being increased from eighty to a hundred. I think it'd just be good for transparency that the public be able to see.
We just amending the agenda.
Yes, okay.
We could do it by amendment, but that's, that just needs to be changed. That needs to be added.
Okay.
We got a first and second discussion. All in favor of adjusting our agenda to reflect that? All in favor, right hand? It carries. See, number four, council consider authorizing the Economic Development Director to submit the grant application for construction support services to South Carolina Aeronautics Commission for the McCormick County Airport, South Carolina Army National Guard grading project in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars twenty-five cent. I've asked Mr. Warner if he would address this request for the public, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This grant request, first thing you'll note in your, in your packet, that the grant application has already been signed by me. We did that because the deadline to submit the application was last week. We went ahead and signed it and submitted it, hoping that you would pass it. So that's, that was done already. The other thing, got communication this week from Aeronautics. This is, this application is for some of the ancillary costs that went with the project that the guard has been doing. Includes things like connecting temporary electrical service to the construction trailer, Wi-Fi support, several things along those lines. Got communications from Aeronautics that they would consider this an amendment to the grant they approved back in January. And the significant piece to that is the grant approved in January was reimbursed at ninety percent. Going into the new fiscal year, it looks like they're gonna be at eighty percent reimbursement. Them considering this as amendment, it would, it would be reimbursed at ninety percent, opposed to eighty. Glad to answer any questions.
Ask any questions? Here none. Could I get a motion to accept?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We got a first?
Second.
First and second. Any discussion, further discussion on this? Here none. All in favor, right hand, please? All right, this time we'll do committee reports, starting with Ms. Brown.
We attended the Juneteenth Community Fish Fry Up at the MEMS Center. Attended the Sheriff's Coffee Meeting that was at the Activity Center here in town. It was well-attended. The speaker was the Director of DSS. He shared some good information, particularly about elder care and the programs that will be available for those people who need assistance as elders and how to report things that need to be reported to DSS. Attended Upper Savannah Council Government's meeting. Attended the MEMS Center seasonal tea. The Chamber of Commerce breakfast. Attended this last Planning Committee meeting. Yeah, and a couple other, oh, several council meetings, of course, that we've had from last time to now. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cook?
Usual meetings, the McCormick County Election Board meeting, the special call council meetings. Attended the CPW meeting, McCormick County School Board meeting. No enrollment figures for the school district are available yet, but they are working on those. And it was announced that a number of students who had elected to be homeschooled or to attend other districts were coming back to the, the school district. So there'll be five or six of those added to the enrollment list this year. Attended a meeting with the, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman and I. Attended a meeting with a Greenville Bank, Lima One, regarding the seven unfinished Impressa Homes at, at SLV. And Lima One will be working with the SLV POA on putting together a reasonable plan for the completion and hopeful marketing of those, of those homes in the village. That's been a sore point up to this point. Also met with Cheryl Daniels and Eddie Brown, CPW officials, with respect to the water quality issue in the county and the village. And they have some, some ideas on that that I'll be, I'll be sharing with council. Represented council at the Port Charlotte two-fifty celebration on Saturday. I think it was a very outstanding event. There were reenactors who were there, who reenacted the, what happened with the surrender of Fort Charlotte by the, by the British to the Patriot Forces. And one of the things that, that I said at that particular presentation was that the county should seriously consider finding the funds to do a more complete restoration of Fort Charlotte, because that would be an ideal tourist attraction, and it would be, could be a centerpiece for further economic development in the, in the county. I also attended a Lander University Professor's Presentation at the library a few weeks ago on a Medal of Honor recipient for various valorious service at Wake Island during World War Two. It was a, he's written a book on it. It was a very interesting presentation. And was very enlightening from an historical standpoint with respect to what happened at Wake Island during World War Two. Didn't attend as many public meetings as I normally do, because had a couple of personal trips. One personal trip was to Branson, Missouri, which was to attend a quilt of honor presentation to my wife's uncle, who is ninety-three years old. He was a, an aide to General Mark Clark in, in Korea. And I think there were about fifteen presentations that were made of quilts of honor. Now, I don't know whether you're familiar with the Quilts of Honor program, but it was impressive. I think it was good recognition of veterans who have contributed to service. And I would like, if we can find some sponsors to contact the local chapter of, or the state chapter of Quilts of Honor, and try to begin a, a program like that in McCormick County. I think it would be very useful and would be a good way to honor our, honor our veterans. The other trip during July was, we went out to Las Vegas to celebrate Ellen's eightieth birthday with the family. And we had a, we had a good time, but it was a, was very exhausting.
He lost all his money.
Not very, not very much. Thank, thank heaven. We have, I've been serving as a liaison between the SLV solar panel, home solar panel users and Little River Electric. We're trying to resolve several questions that our users would like answered by Little River with respect to service, costs, and rates. I also submitted a proposal to our legislative delegation regarding the construction and operation of data centers in South Carolina that would reduce taxpayer and utility customer outlays for improvements and expansion of infrastructure on a statewide basis. I think there's a real issue that is involved in this, and I think we need to look for ways to reduce the burden that is planning on being imposed on a statewide basis for, for implementing infrastructure that's only going to be used on a limited basis at a limited number of data centers within the, within the state. And as indicated above, previously, we have second, we have scheduled a second county council town hall meeting, this time for District Three, on Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, at six P.M. at the SLV Recreation Center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I also went to the conversations and coffee with the sheriff, and I also, I went into the free vaccination with the Humane Society, which was, turned out real well. They had a nice setup right in the middle of town in front of the Mac, and it went down around the corner behind Michelle's, and they had free dog food and had some help from Edgefield and Fort Gordon. Is that right? Am I right? That's right. Yeah, so it was a good turnout, so. That's it for me.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Jennings?
Attended meeting at Upper Savannah Council Government. Mr. Rick Green gave us an update on the FEMA, some of the FEMA funds, so we hoping in the future that McCormick will start receiving some money. Lots of money. That smaller county gonna be receiving about twenty percent of that hundred and fifty million. But that's some more money coming its way us, so we, we hope that McCormick get their share of that money. It, we had a ribbon cutting at the Metro Retro Run, so, that's more.
Forgot about that.
Was there as well, and that went well, I think, our Chamber Director for putting that on, that was good. And they was up in Greenwood, they had a ribbon cutting, doing some expansion for Dr. Benzema site up there. And they know there's a lot of historical plays up there in, on East Camus Street. And be anytime you, up in the Greenwood area, stop by and see that Dr. Maisy is one of South Carolina that made great contribution, not just in the state of South Carolina, but throughout the United States as well abroad. Then also Tri County, met over and talking with Street Ribbon, and like we say, we, we talking about the eighty-dollar fee. If we walk it back, we started out with eighty-dollar fee back in nineteen ninety, ninety-two. And we discontinued for a while, and the story could survive for a while. So then we enacted again in twenty-fourteen, and that's when, and when that Councilman Cook was saying, we, we've been operating with a deputy, and I hope that this, the landsowners will understand that. Now, it's that time to increase the fee, because it just costs more to do, God. It have offset some with hard, bold strap iron, but them prices is, is down now. Do that China just don't buy as much from us as they once have bought. That, so has, has, so has the people that, about every year, except this year, for the last twenty-plus years, they've been coming to McCormick County. They'll work a week, helping renovating homes and doing great thing to enhance the quarters of, of living here. They having a program at the United Methodist Church this Sunday afternoon at three P.M. If you ain't busy, stop with it at the United Methodist Church here in town at, at three P.M.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Mr. Upchurch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna start by thanking the council again for their support. I've had the opportunity to speak with pretty much... their support, had the opportunity to speak with pretty much everybody here multiple times since I started last week. Um, I want to thank Mr. Hip for coming back a few days this weekend, and show me the things that he's been working on and catch me up to speed. There's several projects that are currently underway, and, um, I want to thank him for, for coming back and doing that for us, I know he's ready to go on vacation, and so I'll, uh, I'll cut it short. Um, I also want to thank the community and the staff, they've been extremely welcoming and supportive so far. We have our first directors meeting next week, um, the following week, I'll meet with community organizations, and I'll do my best to get out to each of your neighborhoods and all the districts in the community to learn what you're going through and how we can make McCormick County the best it can be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have to first apologize because I've been basically sick with vertigo for three weeks, so I have not been to all these meetings. I've been invited, I know Mr. Renee calls me like two hours and say, can you be on TV? I said, I, I can't even walk, so, uh, but I do want to comment on our EMS service. Uh, these positions we sit in, we hear so much negative stuff, and rightly so, but I had to call nine-one-one to get an ambulance to get me to the hospital, I dehydrated, and what an experience it turned out to be, uh, I had a, a paramedic that bragged about the equipment and the services and how much she loved her job in McCormick County. We don't hardly hear that much, when she said that we have some of the finest equipment, compared to a lot of these other counties meant so much to me, and means we don't brag enough about the good things that we do have and the services we do provide, extremely professional, how two ladies got me up down my steps in that chair thing, scared me to death. They managed this big old boy, so, uh, I did want to just thank them for their service and, and let people know, uh, that we do have, uh, we do have great equipment, we have great services, and we don't recognize that a lot of times, so. I too, um, glad we have Mr. Upchurch, there's a lot of effort went in to get in our administrator in this position, he's sitting up front. I didn't deliberately put Mr. Hip in the corner back there, so, don't blame that on me, I don't know if he's just trying to get out the door quick as he could, but, uh, we thank him personally, uh, for all he's done, we've met his beautiful wife, I'm trying to talk her into buying a pontoon boat and about getting a place on the lake, and she said she would consider it, so, uh, anyway, thank her for allowing her husband to spend a lot of time up here trying to get us through this transition, has meant a lot, uh, we did do, to start things off, to get Mr. Upchurch involved in the community, I think he's gonna do a great job of, of being very transparent, being seen. We had our first little meeting greet, uh, I made ice cream, uh, it was well received, and, uh, thank everyone that came and met him earlier, uh, but he's very friendly and his door is opened, and, uh, and if y'all have heard all the reports that we've received tonight, it's still, I'm still, very exciting times for McCormick County. Our future is very bright, uh, we just gotta continue to work together, uh, we are blessed with what we do have to be as small as we are, and just thank each and every one of y'all for coming, we have good crowd turnouts, uh, and I can't thank y'all for enough being involved, and that, us working together is gonna make this come to county that we desire, not that it needs a lot, it does have issues, but we are thankful, and I think, uh, we're definitely on the right track, and, uh, thank y'all for coming.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just one thing, on this weekend coming up, the nineteenth, is the, um, Boat Parade out at the Plum Branch Yacht Club, Mrs. Elbridge, um, at twelve o'clock, twelve to three, and then late on in afternoon, starting at is at six, the, um, vendors and food stuff, and then fireworks later on after it gets dark. So all of that be down at the Plum Branch Yacht Club this Saturday, so if you guys get a chance, yeah, Plum Branch Yacht Club, thank you, Mr. Jennings. And when I say yacht club, I assume everybody knows Plum Branch.
No, I didn't want to say-
I shouldn't make that assumption.
I didn't want to say at home.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, in your backyard almost. But yeah, if y'all get a chance to come out, that's always a good time, um, watching the boat parade, and if you haven't signed up yet to put, to be in the boat parade, I don't think it's too late, um, I don't have a boat, but I like seeing the boats, and I like going out on boats, so if anybody wants to invite me out to the lake on your boat, you know, give me a ring, I'll be glad to go out with you.
Good job.
Uh, so yeah, if you get a chance to come out and support the chamber, let's do that, and also the chamber coming up, the July and Christmas, um, Christmas and July, um, the twenty-fifth, um, that's gonna be a great event downtown, so, you know, watch the newspapers, go on Facebook, YouTube, and look for those things, events, and if we could, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Hip and his wife, if you guys wouldn't mind standing and giving him an ovation?
Yeah.
And a thank you. We were really blessed to have someone who has the experience and the connections that he had to be in, to step in for us after Mrs. Stevens left, and we thank him very much for all he's done, and we know he'll still be on dial for us sometimes if we need him, so, Mr. Upchurch, um, yeah, you had a good relationship, good talk with him this week, so keep him, keep him in mind if you need something.
Yes, ma'am, we all have his cell number.
And of course, Crystal, the transition that we've been going through, she has been amazing, and I'd like for us to give her a thanks too as well, should stand up. So hopefully we head in the right direction, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, I think, no doubt about it, no question. Thank you, everyone, at this time, could I, a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second, no discussion needed, all in favor of adjournment, right hand? Good night, everyone, be safe.
Good night, thank you.
Dad, the heat.